All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Alderman Plumsky, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. The rest of you, please rise.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Clerk Tamer, call the roll, please.
Dunn?
Aye. Are here.
Hill?
Here.
Palmski?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Toledo? Absent. Cahill?
Here.
Nudera?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Hanquist?
Here.
Bastido?
Here.
Mulliner?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Veremis?
Here.
Deuter?
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. Item two on the agenda, announcements. Are there any announcements? There being none. Receipt of written communications from the public. Item three, is there anyone in the audience that wants to deliver a written communication to the council? If so, please raise your hand. There are none. We'll move on to item four, public forum. Clerk Tamer, has anyone signed up for public forum this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we have Kristi Blessing.
All right. If you want to take the rearmost microphone, state your name, address is optional. You'll have three minutes. And proceed.
Okay, thank you. My name is Kristi Blessing. I live at 281 West Elm Park Avenue here in Elmhurst. And the reason for me speaking this evening is I wanted to express my support-
Excuse me, could you come a little closer to the microphone? Thanks.
Better?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
That's good, thank you.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Anyway, I wanted to express my support for the outdoor dining, expanded outdoor dining, including both the sidewalks and the parklets. My husband and I own 151 Kitchen &amp; Bar and Pints here in downtown Elmhurst. And the outdoor dining has been a lifesaver for us since the pandemic. So, for the last two years, obviously, we've been dealing with all of the challenges of the pandemic. And believe it or not, we're still dealing with challenges from the pandemic. And given the uncertainty of the new variants and what's happening globally with the pandemic and other variants, we just really don't know what's going to be happening this summer. And we're really asking that you guys do consider the expanded footprint into the parklets. That really does make a difference for the restaurants. There were many restaurants last summer that did take advantage of that expanded footprint. And I know personally in speaking with a lot of them that they are hoping to have that as well. I also thought it created a great vibe in the downtown community. You walked in the streets, the streets were full. That was great for everyone, not just the restaurants. Walking around downtown brought awareness to all the other retail shops and the offerings that Elmhurst has. And it really contributed to being a vibrant, beautiful community. In terms of parking, I know that's a bit of an issue. The city has spent an extended amount of money on parking. There are garages within half a block or less of the downtown area. And there's over 500 spaces in those parking garages that can be utilized. So, we hope that that's not one of the concerns, but there is alternative. In terms of beautifying the space or making it more attractive, I think all of the restaurants are very willing to do that. And many of us have spent quite a bit of money in trying to do that over the last two years. So, with that, I really hope that you will consider it and you will vote to include the parklets as well as the expanded sidewalks for the expanded outdoor dining. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, Mayor.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience that wanted to speak at public forum, public comment, that didn't have the opportunity to sign in? All right, we'll move on from public forum to the consent agenda. Is there any, actually, I'm going to pull from the consent agenda. For technical reasons, we'll bring them back next meeting. Items five point, oops, two-sided here, 5.8, 5.22, and 5.23. 5.8, 5.22, and 5.23. Is there any other item on the consent agenda that any alderman would like to pull off the consent agenda, either for further discussion or to vote no? Alderman Plumsky?
Item 5.4, please.
5.4. Anyone else? Alderman Hanquist?
5.9, please.
5.?
9.
I thought you were pulling off the minutes, but okay. Thank you.
I like to do that once in a while.
All right. Then I'm, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items 5.4, 5.8, 5.9, 5.22, and 5.23. Alderman Brennan, second, Alderman Hanquist. Clerk Tamer?
Dunn?
Aye.
Oh, in order.
Jake was dying to read it, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Jake, yes. Please read the consent agenda.
Yes, absolutely. 5.1, minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on March 7, 2022. 5.2, accounts payable March 17, 2022 totaling $1,822,749.65. 5.3, appointment to the Commission on Youth, Lisa O'Halloran. 5.4 is removed. 5.5, report case 22, PO3, Enterprise Truck Rental, 896 North York Street. 5.6, report case 22, PO4, Enterprise Rent-A-Car, 856 North York Street. 5.7, report cloud services proposal. 5.8, removed. 5.9, report Explore Elmhurst-
Removed also.
That's right.
Yep.
That is. 5.10, report 2020 Water Main Improvements Project Balancing Change Order. 5.11, report 2022 Contract Paving Program Professional Engineering Services. 5.12, DuPage County Health Department Opioid Overdose Prevention. 5.13, report Contract Paving Program Construction Bids. 5.14, report Tree Purchase and Planting Program. 5.15, report Public Tree Removal and Trim, Trim, Trimming, Tree Trimming. 5.16, report Bid 6 Ford Explorer PPV to replace Police Vehicles 6, 7, 8, 9, 15, and 19. 5.17, an ordinance annexing certain property to the City of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois. 5.18, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive license agreement buying between the Spring Road Business Association and the City of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois. 5.19, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive license agreement buying between the York Valette Business Association and the City of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois. 5.20, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive license agreement buying between Elmhurst Running Club, Inc., and the City of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois. 5.21, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit for a planned unit development for the construction of improvements upon the property, commonly known as 188 West Butterfield Road, Elmhurst, Illinois. The following, 522, 523, removed. 524, an ordinance amending section 2.01 entitled Ward Boundaries of Chapter 2 entitled City Council of the Elmhurst Municipal Code. 5.25, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Elmhurst, Illinois, and PACE, the Suburban Bus Division of the Regional Transportation Agency. 5.26, a resolution to adopt an elected official email policy for the City of Elmhurst. And 5.27, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a professional engineering services agreement buying between Clark Dietz, Inc., and the City of Elmhurst for the South Elevated Tank Rehabilitation Project.
All right, you take a drink of water, then we'll call the roll.
Okay, Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo, absent. Cahill?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. The consent agenda is approved minus items 5.4, 5.8, 5.9, 5.22, and 5.23. Let's go back to the top. 5.4, Clerk Tamer, would you read the report, please?
Therefore, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee recommends that the City Council approve the outdoor dining plan for Elmhurst outlined herein for businesses seeking outdoor dining options beginning in 2022. Sign Mark A. Mulliner, Vice Chair, and Emily Bastido, Alderwoman Ward 6, absent Danny Palmski, Chair.
All right, may I have a motion to put this before the council? Alderman Mulliner with a motion. Alderman Bastido with the second. Alderman Mulliner.
This is a report that talks about the program for outdoor dining this year. It included the parklets, which we did not have in the last time. The intent of this report was to make sure that we included those, so we gave that opportunity for the businesses, the restaurants downtown, to have expanded dining as they have for the last few years. We know that the pandemic is waning, but it's not over yet completely, and we're not sure what's going to happen in the near future. So, we wanted to maximize the ability of the downtown area to do what they could. We do know that a number of the restaurants were also interested, and maybe if they have them for a while, be able to dress them up a little bit, as you heard earlier today. So, I hope you accept the report.
Alderman Mulliner. Alderman Plumsky?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a change from the original report. I do support it. I know there's some additional discussion I was unable to participate in. What I would like to do is note that typically when we have permit fees, there's an intent or the effort to cover some, if not all, the administrative costs to administer it. I don't think it is feasible for us at this point to take a look at the pure administrative cost, but I do think it is reasonable and appropriate to associate a fee to cover a portion of these costs. When we, when the city set up barriers, there were 100 and five of them when the first summer of the pandemic in 2020. Those were a cost of $26,315, or about $20,000, $26,000. That was covered by COVID relief funds. So, what we're really looking at is additional setup, well, cleaning, about $70,000 worth of power washing. This is about 17 nights worked by staff. So, I would like to propose, which, I'd like to propose a fee, which there was discussion of a fee. It was not just solidified a fee of $500 per spot. It still would be under $10,000. It's, we're not going to cover our costs, but like our other services administered by the city, there is an effort to cover at least a portion of it. So, I would like to make a motion to amend the report to include language saying the permit fee per city parking spot is $500.
All right, so the motion for adding, amending the report by adding a fee of $500 per space is before, do I have a second? Alderman Bastido, second. That motion is now before the council. Discussion on the motion. Alderman Dunn?
Just a question. So, we have 100 and some barriers, orange plastic barriers. They tend to be in good shape because they're fairly new. Those are also used for construction and those type of activities. Is there a higher level standard for those barriers to be in a dining situation versus what public works would normally use those for? Is that why the cleaning is necessary? Because I don't think we'd really need to clean them if we were just going to use them on this, on the road.
Alderman Plumsky?
Thank you, Mayor. So, the cleaning was a result of the additional outdoor dining. It's hard to discern if it was sidewalk or parkway, which also would help support an effort to not make this completely covered by the, I'm sorry, parklet dining. But it, because of the outdoor activity and food and waste involved, required more cleaning, not because of the barriers themselves.
All right, other discussion? Alderman Bastido?
Yes, I support this amendment. I think the restaurants have shown their willingness to contribute to the cost of this. And as you heard from Kristi Blessing, you know, they did some things to improve the look of the orange barriers, and they're willing to invest even more. Although this is space, like the cleaning that takes place, my understanding is it covers all the sidewalks where there's public dining. So, the public is enjoying that space. I don't think the restaurants that use parklets should have to bear the full weight of that or have to cover the full cost because they are public sidewalks cleaned with taxpayer dollars. And I think having a lot of outdoor dining does bring more tax dollars to our city. So, I agree that I think it's appropriate to do $500 per space. And I think the restaurants who use these parklets have expressed that they're willing to do so.
Thank you, Alderman Bastido. Any additional discussion? Alderman Mulliner?
Yeah, I don't support this. And the reason why I don't is because there were 19 restaurants downtown that had outdoor dining last year. And we're relying on, I believe it's eight of them that had outdoor dining, that had parklets last year to pick up the cost, the significant cost of cleaning. If we're going to do something like that, it needs to, in my opinion, encompass all of the restaurants that had outdoor dining because they all contributed to the problem on the streets. I, the thing that I would, if it were me and I was looking at this, I would say that a $200 fee is much more reasonable because there is about a $4,000 fee to install and remove the barriers themselves. And, you know, if we use all the barriers, I think $200 is probably a reasonable amount for people to come in and take, put them up and take them down. But if we're going to, if we're going to base it on the cleaning, the cleaning is something that involved all of the restaurants and all of the businesses downtown. So, I just have a difficult time justifying it on that. So, I can't support this at this time.
Other discussion? Alderman Veremis, then Alderman Deuter.
Thank you. $500 per spot, how many spots on average have been used per restaurant? Two?
Yes. Two. Alderman Deuter?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I don't think a $500 fee per spot is at all unreasonable. I do think it's important, you know, the whole exercise that has taken place over the past year is to think about how we move beyond pandemic relief for outdoor dining and think of a more permanent approach going forward for outdoor dining. So, in that regard, I think we should think about the use of city resources for outdoor dining as thoughtfully as we do our other economic development tools. So, we support, we support businesses with our sales tax incentive, with our TIF investments, and this is another use of city resources to support businesses. So, to, to think about what does it cost the city to support those businesses? What does the city lose in terms of other public benefits? In this case, it's parking spaces. You know, I heard Alderman Mulliner just mention there's $4,000, which is the cost to the city of just placing the barriers. And then in addition to that, we know that the city staff is going around more frequently to do the cleaning. So, I love outdoor dining, and I think we should have it in our downtown area, but a thoughtful approach to it, you know, if we didn't get there this year for a permanent approach, I hope we get there next year. But regardless, I think looking at a fee, I know for sidewalk dining, the committee discussed there should be a fee for that, but that they would be, you know, an analysis of what the costs are and look at that for next year. Parklet dining, you know, I just don't think it's unreasonable that we charge $500 a spot. I actually think that's a very minor request for the contribution, and I think it is easily justified. So, I support the amendment as proposed.
Other discussion? Alderman Hanquist?
All right, I got to jump in. So, is it not a requirement of these businesses to keep the sidewalks clean? What's, just, I haven't dug into the, no?
Yes.
It is.
Well, we do power washing.
How often do we do the power washing?
Yeah, and we do general sweeping, I believe, as well.
It's, it's more the power washing that we do. We, we do expect the restaurants to clean up any of the litter that's on the streets or the sidewalks. Yeah, and I'm sorry, Assistant Manager Cott, how often do we power wash?
Every other week, we do Tuesday, Wednesday night, one night south of the tracks, one night north of the tracks. So, every other week.
Is it, is it our guys that are doing it, Public Works? Okay. So, is it, are we paying overtime for this?
We try to reschedule them for nights, but, but often we are paying overtime.
Alderman Nudera?
So, if in fact there wasn't parklets, would we still be power washing the sidewalks and the street?
Not the street.
Okay. And I have one other point, Mr. Mayor. Is it reasonable to think that if the $500 fee goes into effect, that it would be used as a tool to make an assessment for the second year on reasonability of the finances? Is it balancing the books? Are we overcharging, are we undercharging? Something that's going to make it relatively palatable for the businesses?
Well, the, the report does state that we didn't quite get the full analysis done this year. So, as the report says, it's to get through, the, the outdoor seizing, season is upon us. It starts, you know, next week, I think. So, it's to sort of make it through, to see, there was some discussion about whether city resources giving up the spaces has a value. So, and because I was at the meeting, I would just say there was discussion that we would look at it. City Center didn't fully weigh in on whether they support it or they don't. There's like a subcommittee recommendation, so I would say it's interim.
Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. So, the way I look at this, I, I love the parklets. I think it's a good idea. There's an opportunity cost to it as well. So, we're losing 16 spaces that otherwise would be used by residents to park in our downtown area. So, for me, I think a $500 fee to take ownership of that spot seems reasonable. Cleaning, we don't want a dirty downtown. So, you know, at the end of the day, whatever cleaning the city does today, I think is appropriate. And it's, you know, whether it's a, a parklet frontage or, you know, not, cleaning's cleaning in my opinion. So, the rationale for my vote for the amendment is that, you know, they're taking up city property.
All right. Alderman Bastido?
So, just to be clear, we power wash the sidewalks in downtown, you know, all the time. We have to do it a lot more, or we have been doing it a lot more the last two years because of the outdoor dining. So, the reason we're having to clean more is because more people are coming to our restaurants, to our downtown, and using it. And I think that's a great reason to have to clean the sidewalks and the parklets a little bit more.
All right, other discussion? Alderman Deuter?
Thank you, Mayor. Assistant Manager Cott may be able to correct me if I'm not right in saying this, but I believe the City Center, which is our downtown kind of promotion and business organization, the subcommittee recommendation that Mayor referred to, talked about allowing parklets but charging a fee. They didn't make a recommendation for that fee, but City Center did suggest that if we allow parklets, it should be with a fee associated with it.
All right, other discussion? All right, so we're voting on the amendment to the report to add a $500 per space fee. So, we're voting on the amendment first. Clerk Tamer, would you call the roll on the amendment?
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo, absent. Cahill?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
No.
Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
12 ayes, one nay, one absent.
12 ayes, one nay, one absent. The amendment is adopted. We're on to the full report. Any discussion on the report as amended with the $500 fee? Alderman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I support outdoor dining, but orange barricades and city parking space utilization were emergency measures enacted to support businesses during COVID restrictions. So, I will be voting, voting yes on this measure, but there's one point I'd like to make and I hope we keep in mind. This one-year extension that we're voting on today should be understood as an extension with extraordinary circumstances. It shouldn't be adding to the expectations and precedent for an identical situation next year. I believe we can work with business to do better than orange barricades and emergency measures going forward by creating perhaps cost-sharing solutions as opposed to temporary measures in city parking spaces.
So, no motion for a yellow barricade? All right, thank you, Alderman Hill. Other discussion on the motion? Alderman Mulliner?
Even though I don't support the amendment, I am going to support this report because I think that the downtown dining has made a big difference in the city of Elmhurst. I think it's really brought a inviting community. I think it's caused a situation where as people even drive by on the trains, they go, "Look what's happening in Elmhurst," because the streets are constantly filled with people. And I think that's what we want in downtown, and I think it's a very positive thing for downtown, so.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? Clerk Tamer, call the roll on the report.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo, absent. Cahill?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nay, one absent. The report is adopted. Onto item 5.9. Clerk Tamer, will you read the report, please?
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Affairs and Safety Committee that the City Council authorize the City Attorney to prepare the necessary documents for approval of the 2022 Explore Elmhurst Express Trolley Program. Signed, Jacob Hill, Vice Chair, James A. Nudera, Fifth Ward, absent Marty Deuter, Chair.
All right, may I have a motion to put this before the council? Alderman Hill, and second by Alderman Nudera. Alderman Hill?
Yes, this is a report to reenact the Explore Elmhurst Express Trolley Program, which we're essentially looking at a very similar program to what was run in 2019 with the same 30-minute loop and the same stops that were realized in the 2019 go-around.
Thank you. Alderman Hanquist?
Thanks. My apologies to the committee because I intended to call you today, but the weather got to me and I freaked out. So, I'll take, I'll take that. I'm in total support of this. I just had one question regarding the advertising revenue. Just so you guys know, going back a ways, I talked to many businesses and said, "Hey, if you guys do this and we get it up and running, we'll be happy to sell advertising." So, I understand the chambers involved selling that. I just wanted to understand the financials behind that right now. So, they're doing it, they're getting a fee. It says a split, and I just wanted to understand that, so you can give me a little clarity on that.
All right, does, do anyone, does anyone in the committee recall what the split was before we go to some of the experts?
It's a true split.
Fifty-fifty?
Yes. The, the Chamber X is our agent in selling those. They have more discretion in who or what might be advertised as opposed to the city. And so, as, as part of that fee, this is the structure that we've had since the beginning. I did talk with the Chamber Director, and it was agreed that we would keep it as the same fee as previous years and look at restructuring that for next year and most likely increasing that.
Okay, so I'll, I'll support it, but I would like to look at restructuring that. Just, just in general for, because I know we've had a lot of turnover. That was supposedly something the businesses were going to be up to, to doing. I don't know exactly the role of the chamber there, so I'll support it, but I'd just like to look at that next year. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Hanquist. Other discussion? Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo, absent. Cahill?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nay, one absent. 13 ayes, zero nay, one absent. Item, report 5.9 is adopted. Onto our re-resolutions. Clerk Tamer, 6.1, please read the resolution.
I'm slowing down, Mayor. Hold on one second. A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a final balancing change order in final payment to J. Congdon Sewer Service, Inc., for the City of Elmhurst 2020 Water Main Improvements Project. See item 5.10.
May I have a motion to put 6.1 before the council? Alderman Brennan with a second, by Alderman Hanquist. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. So the, the settlement of this water main contract is, is well overdue. Therefore, you know, in the interest of closing out the, the contract to align with our calendar year close for last year, we're asking to suspend the rules. Thank you.
All right, other, other discussion on this item? Clerk Tamer, call the roll, please.
Dunn.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Toledo absent Cahill.
Aye.
Udera.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Veremis.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
13 ayes, zero nays, one absent.
13 ayes, zero nays, one absent. Resolution 6.1 is adopted. Resolution 6.2, Clerk Tamer, please read the resolution.
A resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a professional field observation and materials testing services agreement by in between Construction and Geotechnical Material Testing, Inc., and the City of Elmhurst for the 2022 Contract Paving Project. See item 5.11.
All right, you can have a motion to put item 6.2 before the council? Alderman Brennan, second Alderman Hanquist. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So this, this report's associated with contract paving that, that we're doing in 2022. This geo-testing is required for, before we, we actually, you know, do our, our heavy work. So therefore, in the interest of making sure we stay on schedule, we would like to suspend the rules to, to approve this, this report.
All right. So the suspension of the rules was part of the report. We're on to the resolution.
Yeah, sorry. Yep.
No problem. Discussion on the resolution? Clerk Tamer?
Dunn.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Toledo absent Cahill.
Aye.
Aye.
Udera.
Aye.
Park.
Aye. Sorry.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Veremis.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
13 ayes, zero nays, one absent.
13 ayes, zero nays, one absent. Resolution 6.2 is adopted. Item 7, Reports and Recommendations of Elected Appointed Officials, 7.1, Mayor Levin. Several things. The city received the Government Finance Officer Association Award Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for its most recent fiscal year. This certificate is the highest form of recognition in the area of government accounting and financial reporting, and this is the 32nd year the city received this prestigious award. I want to, and I think some of the Aldermen were watching the Elmhurst University Men's Basketball Team game. Unfortunately, they didn't win, but we want to congratulate the university's team and Coach John Baines on their runner-up national championship in the Division III Men's Basketball Tournament. So to be invited to the tournament, the team went 3-0 in the CCIW Conference Tournament and then defeated five teams, including a 90-68 victory in the Final Four to reach the national championship. So we do, I mean, it's quite an achievement. Lastly, the city is proud to announce the Public Works, Citizen Public Works Academy, which is a six-week program designed to give citizens a working knowledge of the City of Elmhurst Public Works Department, which provides vital services to the community. The program includes an in-depth overview of the divisions, interactive hands-on activities, along with tours of city facilities and presentations by public work staff. Program is limited to 25 students per session, and the application session, deadline is April 8th. It's available on our website, elmhurst.org. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Two reminders for residents. One is that city stickers are on sale and that they're expected to be displayed by May 1st in your vehicles. So if you could remind constituents on your social media, that would be helpful. Information, of course, on our website. And the second item is that the spring cleanup dates are quickly approaching. That is April 2nd for those with a Wednesday garbage pickup, April 9th, Saturday, April 9th for those with a Thursday pickup, and Saturday, April 16th for those with a Friday pickup. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Any other reports? Alderman Brennan.
Sorry, Mayor, this probably should have gone under announcements, but the Public Works and Building Committee will not have a quorum on March 28th. Therefore, due to spring break conflicts, therefore, we'll be canceling our meeting on the 28th. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Brennan. Alderman Palomsky.
Thank you, Mayor. Development Planning and Zoning will also not be holding our meeting next week.
All right, Alderman Dunn.
I'm, I'm going to echo that lack of quorum due to our evacuation of Elmhurst during spring break.
It's just, it's just a test. It's not a real emergency. Alderman Deuter, are we all coming to Public Affairs and Safety then?
I did, yes. We're planning to meet unless there is not a robust agenda, but for now, we're planning to meet.
All right, very good. Any other reports? Alderman Dunn.
Yeah, I just want to point out Finance Director Coyle put together a very good presentation for our committee meeting last week, given a summary, a highlight of how things went in 2021. And of course, we went into the year very conservative with our budgeting, but just a couple points, and I encourage you all to take another look at that. I think she, she did a very good job with that, and it really speaks to a good story for Elmhurst fiscal health coming into 2022. Our sales tax revenue last year was $1 million over budget. Home rule, sales tax, $300,000 over budget. State income tax, $1.6 million over budget, and food and beverage, $200,000 over budget. So all good indicators. Of course, as I said, we went in very conservative with our expected revenues with our previous finance director, but it's a good story, and I think it's, it sets the table for a good year coming out of what were two tough years for the city.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Last call, Alderman Park.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question. The Public Works Academy, what ages can those students be? Is it appropriate for families or just adults?
Over 18, so if all your kids are over 18, it is appropriate for families.
Good. Touche.
Yeah, bring your grandparents. Okay, a lot of reports. Anything else? All right, other business?